I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. Before we get started with recognition, we're going to start talking about some updates and things that are happening in our district. Someone report, usually elementary people know this. You elementary people, how many more days of school do we have?
I think it's like thirty-five.
That was always an interesting phenomenon because high school people got drunk doing testing and stuff. So I love that. You all know that. But before we get started, you just want to talk about we've been busy and then there are probably thirty-five things that are going to happen before now on the end of the year with everything going on as well. So does anybody want to talk about their things they've been interested in or following? Or all jumping here too?
I have been lucky enough to go around some with the foundation grants, which have been busy handing out $116,000, which thank you to community, the foundation for making it possible getting money and stuff everywhere for our students and our teachers. So that's super cool. Another thing, I have my flyer from today even. Woodville is going to be doing their 100-year celebration before our next meeting. So that's May 3rd. A lot of cool historical documents, pictures, photos and stuff from 100 years of Woodville, which is crazy. So you can go see that. That is May 3rd, the six o'clock to 7:30. Eighth graders are getting ready to head to DC and eighth grade parents, which was me last year. So Godspeed to you guys. It's a fun and great trip and I know they'll represent as well as they always do. And last thing I'll share is congrats to Johnson Elementary for being a Kentucky Green School. I do have a question. You guys recycle Mr. Keough's cake cups to take cake cups from the coffee?
Has to be completely cleaned out.
They were cleaned out.
Grounds at all.
No, it's no ground. So when I visit you tomorrow, I'm going to bring about 50 cake cups.
Okay, alright.
They will be cleaned. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I know later on this week, the Nesties, a collaboration between the education foundation and the district honoring several teachers and support staff that is on this Thursday from 5 to 9. I mean, did I get that right? Yeah, so that's a great event. The first time was last year, so this is the second one and it was a really good time last year. So join us if you can. So tickets are on sale for at least, I think, until tomorrow?
Baseball team played down the tournament over spring break. You could probably go more on that one, right? But I've heard lots of good reports after that. So that's encouraging.
The softball team in Myrtle Beach, all kinds of really great agreements over spring break.
I'll mention them real quick and I think we'll have a lot more news around it next month. The Highland Theater Program finished Sweeney Todd in March. It was really a great show and the cast and it was amazing. I think Cappy Awards will be announced at some point here very soon, I think. And so at next month's meeting, we'll be able to announce who those nominations are.
I have a couple of things. One of them is FCC LA. They had 13 state qualifiers with nine going to nationals this summer. So they had a really good showing there. Also on April the 27th, and I know the middle school will probably be giving more information, but the middle school gifted program is doing a city game night. It sounds kind of funny.
It's a family game night.
Family game night? Okay. So it sounds like, will you tell us more?
Um, yeah. It is a, it's open to the public, which I knew the time. I just looked on my phone. But it is coming up and it is held here at the City Halling and it will just be for, you know, parents, kids. Come on down and just kind of try to build some relationships, foster community. And it's led by some of our most gifted and talented villagers too.
I love the idea because so much of what we do is working in the community. So I think it's a great thing to get started. Thank you. Yeah, we, a lot of exciting things and we're recognizing quite a few things around the district. We will be recognizing our Odyssey of the Mine winners here in just a few minutes. So I don't want to take too much steam out of the next recognition. Our forensics team was named a school of distinction. There are so many things that are coming up this spring from elementary variety shows that I think happened as early as this Saturday, right? Moyer has talent. I think Woodville is the 21st maybe. And so there are talent shows and variety shows and state testing all on the same, all on the same radar. But really, we're in a super special place. Everywhere from foundation grants where we get to go around and do prize control for teachers and community members, being part of bringing the joy to each one of our schools. It just really makes us recognize how needed a place we're in. So we thank everyone for being involved and the energy and spirit that we bring on this beautiful day here in April. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. And let's recognize Odyssey of the Mine state winners. I believe Sarah Hume, are you going to come up here and introduce your people?
Sure, absolutely. So I am the regional director of Odyssey of the Mine. I kind of help coordinate Odyssey of the Mine for the district. And our teams have been absolutely phenomenal. Also, our coaches that stepped up and almost all of our coaches in the elementary schools were first-year coaches. Oh my gosh. I mean, the support of the parents was absolutely phenomenal. Hopefully they'll be coming back. Usually at this point in time, it's like, oh my gosh, it was overwhelming. And then you get the bug and you come back the next year. I have, my co-coach is Dan Osegi right here. And then boys, do you want to come up? So we've got Quinn Osegi. We have Duncan here. We have Sadar Kadani. We have Harrison Schultz and Jake Haggerty. These guys are absolutely amazing. They work so hard, not only to be able to create the machinations that they create and their machines as well, but they do it in a creative and collaborative setting. The ability for them to work together is absolutely amazing. Talk about 21st century skills. This is it. Collaborative and absolutely wonderful. Do you guys have any questions that these guys can answer for you?
So, I was going to say, what was the challenge or prompt this year?
So the challenge prompted this year is we had to make a vehicle that can hold two people and it has to be able to be propelled, be propelled in some unusual way. Like you can't use like a motor or like pedals of some sort. So we decided to use like a wheel. Like a, like on a boat. And it's just like on a gym floor. So we had the, so we used like level on the end of it to support friction. And that was kind of the challenge or difficulty with this year's challenge.
And I understand that this is your team that's qualified to go to the world?
Yeah.
Okay. So tell us what that will be like.
So it's going to be several days of, it is a true world competition. So we're not going to be competing just with nationals. We're going to be competing against China. The team to beat really is Polska. They have actually a, they usually want to have the Odyssey inside the school. So it is a learning and then the whole country kind of goes against it and we're going against the best of their country. There are, I believe, 36 countries being represented. I believe there's 38 states being represented. These guys are probably going to be going against maybe 70 teams of the best in the world. So they're going, they're going to be readapting their things to accommodate just some minor changes that they have to do. But it's going to be at Michigan State. So it'll be a several day thing. And the experience is absolutely amazing. These, you guys have been there, right? Can you just tell them for maybe like a minute about what you experienced last time?
So there's obviously a lot of people, but there's, there are also, a lot of people are speaking different languages and you kind of have to, they don't know a whole lot of English. So you kind of have to work your way, but you can still make friends. And it's cool to see other people's performances and how their hard work has paid off.
Well, there aren't many world, come on, come in here. There aren't many world, there aren't many things that people qualify for world champions. So I mean, that's a very cool thing. Put that on your resume.
Yeah.
As a counselor.
That's right.
What else would you say about it?
Well, one of the things I liked the most was just looking at all the other people's solutions. Like when I was thinking of a solution for our problem, people just had completely different things. And it was very interesting to see how different people adapted to what I thought was like the only way to solve something. And it kind of was like an eye-opening experience to show, you know, how things can be solved so many different ways.
So do you guys have new ideas on revamping before you head there of the challenge you got?
Yeah.
Did they give you some feedback? I'm assuming about this competition so you can respond to that and then talk amongst yourselves and after seeing other people, at least at that level, how they did it? Revision, that's all that's important.
I'd like to see this scrap.
Absolutely.
I don't think it's moving me. I mean, maybe like a student's size could cross the floor, but...
The, oh, oh, no. Their stuff, they can hold, their thing, I think they could probably hold all of you guys.
Wow, that is...
It was built, you can squish together, but yeah, it was solid. It was totally solid.
Well, we have some T-shirts for you guys as state champions and some shirts for the kids.
Make sure you get a picture for your mom.
Congrats, guys.
Thank you. And thank you for all of your support. Truly, we could not do it without you.
Well, thank you for your dedication.
And also, coaches, I know it's a lot of time and effort and that's part of the reason it's been a strong program. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats, guys.
Okay, the next person is Alicia Whitmer coming up here. Are you giving a Tradition of Excellence Award?
I am. I'm going to read what I submitted on behalf of Brooke.
Want to come up too?
Sure. Come on up here.
There's going to be video.
When I think of someone who models excellence in Fort Thomas schools, I think of Brooke Rees-Endeck. You may find Brooke working as a special education assistant at Woodville. She may be coaching cheerleading at the middle school. She may be watching one of the numerous activities that her for children are involved in at Fort Thomas. And I'm always asking Brooke, when do you ever sleep? But one of the coolest things about Brooke is that she not only loves Fort Thomas schools, but she loves the people more. If anybody were to need an example of advocating for children and supporting them to succeed, it would be Brooke. It's a joy for her to come into my classroom every day because I know that she might have a specific student and a goal, but she is there to work. She will work with anybody in the room. And they also love her and know that she's a part of our classroom just as any other adult that might be as well too. So one thing that I hope Brooke realizes is that she has touched so many students' lives at Woodville through her positive attitude and encouragement and that is a complete honor to recognize her with the Tradition of Excellence Award.
Yes, stay there. We'd like to shower you with warm praise. So yes, Tradition of Excellence Award for Brooke in recognition of her dedication and commitment to supporting and encouraging student inclusion and achievement. We know Woodville works so much with that and it's great to see you get honored for being a part of it.
Thank you.
Do we need to get a picture? Are we going to? Hold on, Brooke. Don't leave. And then we want to picture what you do.
Thank you. And then our next group is our student showcase from Woodville. So if you'd like to come up and bring all your students and introduce them?
Thanks for having us tonight. I will take a ton of time, but I did want to introduce our third grade students. They've been working really hard on a project that they are very passionate about. They are going to talk to you all about how to be courageous leaders with their inclusive playground projects. So I'll let them come up and kind of tell you about that.
How do curious leaders lead? We learned that leaders lead by solving economic problems. We learned about opportunity cost, which is when you can only get one thing because you have scarcity. Scarcity is when there is not enough of something you need like inclusive equipment, space, or money.
Leaders have to think about these things when they are trying to make decisions. We have a picture, we have a picture here of an inclusive playground. It is wheelchair accessible and kids with special needs don't get on it.
Woodville's problem?
We have a problem at Woodville that, problem is that there is no special needs equipment. Leeches can't go on the mulch and the, and the people in the leeches can't help for that reasons.
We are thinking that we can add inclusive equipment for our special needs kids so they don't have to sit and watch other kids having fun and so they can have fun too.
Why inclusive play is beneficial?
Children learn while playing. If kids are not included in play, they won't have a chance to develop relationships.
Brains may not be as developed as kids who do get included in play. Inclusive play is beneficial because children of all abilities get to play together. When children of all abilities get to play together, they learn to be accepting of all others' differences. Kids with special needs are happier and more stimulated when included in a safe play. Play?
Can't see it. I'm wearing glasses.
Do you want to conclude or just?
Sure.
Okay. Can you see it there?
Play is beneficial for kids so they can learn social skills like making friends and being kind. Another reason for play being good is so they can grow stronger muscles for jobs when they're an adult. Kids can learn fine motor skills and can have a lot more fun, have a higher chance to not be bullied.
The VIOX and VIOX engineers said that we need a safe playground, but at the same time, easily accessible equipment for special needs kids so they can be able to play. We need to talk with Mr. Gettenhues and Ms. Waymeyer about what we need to put on the playground for special needs children to play with so we can be inclusive while playing. We spoke to our special education teachers who said we need a new surface and equipment that gives our kids sensory inputs like swings, spinners, and instruments. We spoke to PTO and the education foundation about helping us with funding this project.
Ways to change our playground. Number one, rubber surface instead of mulch because wheelchairs can't go on it and special needs kids throw the mulch and put it in their mouth. Two, swings instead of snake because not a lot of people play on the snake. Three, sensory walls and music instruments because it helps with our senses.
Next steps. We have, we have ranked our top needs on the playground. New surface, spinning equipment, music slash sensory equipment. We will check with the VIOX and VIOX engineers to get across on purchasing these things.
Oh, there's a typo. I don't know. It changed a lot of words.
We will ask our PTO and education foundation for funding and use our profits from our farmers market sales to help. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Well, I want you all to come up here and I want you to tell us your names. Okay?
My name is Corbin Heid.
My name is Kaden Reese.
My name is Emily Kazlo.
My name is Alita Keefen.
My name is Avery House.
My name is Dennis Hsu.
My name is Marley David-Hesha.
My name is Gillian Riddell.
My name is Evelyn Trumper.
What kind of things did you learn from this? Did you, did you find, did you see equipment you had never seen before?
I never realized until we had this science project on economics, I never realized that this was like a big problem. Like I never really thought how much, how much we could change to make everybody included.
Anybody else? I saw a hand in there.
I never realized that there was as much, I usually thought that there was like swings and like rubber walls and stuff only. But now I realize that there's more stuff than just for like other kids to play with, not just an ordinary kid or not everyone's ordinary.
Yeah, because it seems like some of the stuff you guys were talking about, inclusive play, that's cool for anybody, right? And for all kids. So to include all of our friends, like maybe, like you were saying, it's going to be an even better experience for you guys.
And I got to tell you, I didn't think about the mulch. So I learned that tonight. So thank you for telling us about that. Makes total sense. Okay? Come on up and tell us.
I never really thought about kids with disabilities until I saw when, I saw a disability kid. She never really, she just like sits around and she gets endangered and stuff. And I just wondered, what if I was that kid? I would be very sad that I didn't have anybody to play with. And I just wanted to help kids with disabilities because I think that it'd be very sad if they never really got to have like a chance to talk to, talk to that anybody else.
That sounds like an empathetic collaboration there. So y'all were talking about economics. Are you going to get to, what, you talked about scarcity and some of those things. Are you going to be able to buy all the things you want to buy? Or what's the economics behind that?
I was going to ask that. So I had the pleasure of coming to see a presentation at Woodville and they talked about opportunity cost. Did you guys, anybody in this group have an example of an opportunity cost challenge?
We have an, we have an opportunity cost. We don't, we can't get everything we need. Say we want to get a slide or everything on our list. We might only be able to get two or only like two of our options.
So how'd you decide you're getting rid of the snake? That's the question. And what is the snake?
Mr. Beach would like to play on it.
I would be the only one, it sounds like. There's nobody plays on it.
You better drink milk if you play on the snake. So how'd you guys decide the snake?
We decided that to remove the snake. It's like a thing where you jump on and it moves, but not like, only like, I don't see anybody really playing on that. Like I don't see anybody jumping on it and stuff.
Tell them what we could do with the snake.
We wanted to replace it.
Tell them.
For swings because it's like a spinny thing and a lot of the little kids like spinning things and not a lot of people like snakes.
Is somebody going to add something?
And if we do get rid of the snake, we should send it to a score and need.
Like a reuse of it too.
We wanted to get rid of it because we didn't really use it and we could replace it with something better and more inclusive. So other people that have special needs could play on it because they, they're capable, but we need some more things that they could get off safely.
I know in the fall, the city was talking about doing some inclusive playgrounds at the fort too.
Oh, maybe they can come ask you guys if you can cheer some of their research. Awesome. We have some shirts for you guys. I'm going to give that to your teacher. Make sure you get these. Thank you for coming to speak with us.
Thank you.
I also want to say that you all rock the pledge of, pledge of flag. So thank you for that. Thank you for coming. All right. Now is the community forum portion of our meeting. The community forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to informally address the board about a variety of topics, including issues for future consideration. Since topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on the public agenda, the community forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response. Answered briefly if a matter of procedure or tabled as they may be a future agenda item. Speakers who have registered at the reception area are asked to identify themselves, state their reasons for addressing the board. Please address the board as a whole through the chairperson rather than individual members. And as always, we want questions or comments returning to a individual student, employee, community member cannot be discussed in open meetings. Okay? And we have one person. So Mr. Marlin, you want to come up and speak?
Sure.
Um, as you all know, I'm Toby Marland, the parent of two students at Highlands High School. Um, and I'm here tonight to express my disappointment, um, in this board for the refusal to publicly support our LGBTQ plus students in this district in the face of hateful and discriminatory legislation in Kentucky. I came to this board meeting in February of this year and asked this board to take a stand against some of this legislation that was working its way through the legislature. At that time, um, perhaps, uh, you know, perhaps the board or some individual members did, uh, take some action behind the scenes, but I'm unaware of any public action. I hope I'm wrong about that. I'd love to be wrong. If I miss something, please let me know because it's a, it's an issue that's near and dear to my heart. Um, obviously I know a request for me in February does not demand any sort of response from this board. Um, but I think that the silence speaks volumes. Uh, I also understand that this board and the members were likely powerless to actually prevent legislation from being passed. Uh, but that doesn't mean it's not worth taking a public stand in support of these students who are some of the most vulnerable in our district. Senate Bill 150 in particular was co-sponsored by the state senator from this district, uh, Shelley Fromeyer. Um, this woman who supposedly represents me in the state senate has no problem calling transgender children disordered. And while I've come to expect that sort of hateful vitriol from a politician, um, I'd like to expect that or from a supposedly nonpartisan board expected to lead public education in this district. Uh, so I would continue to urge this board to find some way to support these students um, and show them that they're welcome and viewed as worthy of support from those expected to lead their education. Um, I, I've given each of you a copy of a resolution from a suburban school district in another deep red state in Indiana um, that did kind of what I asked. They publicly came out and said, hey, we may not be able to stop this, but this legislation is harmful to these students and we don't think it's a good thing for public education. And it gave all the board members in that district a chance to individually sign on and say, I'm not going to stand for this kind of hate. Um, you know, perhaps that resolution's mostly symbolic, but as we all know, sometimes symbolism and visibility is important in making these students and their families feel seen, I think is important in this district. Um, I won't take too much more time. I also urge this district to do everything possible to ensure that transgender students in particular are not addressed without preferred pronouns and that they're not deadnamed. I raised this issue at a meeting last school year, um, and one of you responded saying that you wanted to do better and I would say, here's your chance. Um, I know this bill means that now you cannot legally require teachers to use preferred pronouns or names, but I would submit that any teacher who refuses to do so and instead chooses to focus on a child's assigned at birth genitalia is not suitable to be around kids. Um, I've never met, I know it's hard, but I've never met a transgender person who doesn't show extraordinary grace to anybody who's trying to genuinely respect their identity. Um, but study after study shows that refusal to do so will cause psychological trauma to these children, regardless of what our state politicians say. The anti-LGBTQ atmosphere in this district in this state has cost this district students. There are families in this district who have felt the need to send their kids away from this district because of this issue. This atmosphere makes these kids less safe. Allowing and perpetuating an atmosphere of codified bigotry is doing our students and our community a disservice. It's not the real world. These kids are gonna have to learn this stuff. They're gonna have to be aware of this stuff when they get out of the friendly confines of, of Fort Thomas. When it comes to bigotry like this, there is no silent neutral position. Uh, you have students and families in this district who are under attack at our state level. Uh, you can either sit silently with the attacker, you can at least symbolically stand up for those who you were elected to serve. Maybe not everyone will, but I'll, I'll, I will for sure be listening. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, the action items, the first thing on our action item is Johnson Elementary Replacement, Jerry? Now that we've replaced it.
Every month, there's one step closer to the end and me never having to say the word Johnson Replacement or Wisconsin Replacement Project again. Tonight, we have two, uh, action items. Um, we're requesting approval of revised BG1s for both the temporary relocation and then after that, the main project. These will be our documents that go down to KDE that says we are filing this document as the completion of it. We want to verify the amount that we spent and how we paid for that. And then next month, we will be able to bring BG5s for the temporary project to you and put that one to an end, I'm sorry, for the main project, put that one to an end. And the BG4s for the temporary project and then that, the next month, do BG5s for the temporary project and that should be it. So we are asking for approval of revised BG1 for the temporary relocation, the amount of nine hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, any questions, comments or anything? These are all numbers that we know. So, um, I need a motion for the approval of revised BG1 in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents for the Johnson Temporary Relocation of the Johnson Elementary Replacement Project.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Anybody all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I know I didn't switch right to the opposed.
And then similar motion for the main project, only this one cost a little bit more. Twenty-four million, one hundred forty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Okay, and again, a number that we've, you know, that we've looked at and, and known. Any other questions people have?
Well, uh, so you, you think by the end of the school year, it'll be like the final, everything will be filed and is that where we're at? I think the June meeting will, will be able to finalize everything and, and upload it to KDE and hope they give us the check marks. So it'll be two steps in. You have one step in June. And again, the, the project's been done a long time, sort of, but KDE required us to attach the recently completed parking lot at the, the temporary location onto the main project. So that kind of held everything up. We wait till that was completed and then start these steps.
So this is, you know, first meeting we work, that we vote on these, it's like, yeah, but you know, we keep, we keep doing these all the time, so. Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the revised BG1 in the amount of twenty-four million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents for the Johnson Elementary Renovation Project.
I move. We approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next.
The message related to the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract. Um, as you know, when, uh, we do this project, um, one of the beautiful aspects of it is that when things occur that maybe cost a little more money, that doesn't cost the district money, it's up to CMTA and their service providers to foot those bills. However, there's paperwork that goes along with that. So we had a piece of equipment that cost about forty-three thousand dollars more to purchase. So in order for CMTA to pay us for the difference, we have to reduce a section of their contract by a little over forty-three thousand dollars. KDE requires us to file a construction cost neutral change order. It's a document that basically says we're paying more for this equipment and because the district wrote the POs for the equipment, CMTA is transferring money from this bucket of money to that bucket of money so that it doesn't cost the district any more money. It's basically, it doesn't change the cost of the project, doesn't change the cost, um, to us, but it does slightly reduce money that CMTA will, for lack of a better term, profit.
Okay, questions?
I think you had said it was just because it was delayed or they picked something else. I can't remember. They, they had to pick a, um, air handler, a rooftop air unit that would fit inside the existing roof, uh, structure. And the one they originally chosen wasn't going to fit, so they had to go with a different unit and it cost forty-three thousand, it's like forty-three thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars. So, but that's, I don't know, they're fucking built for, but this is the paperwork that has to be done.
Were they able to get a lot of things done over spring break?
We did get a good portion done during spring break and we feel good about where we are and, uh, our next step is to look at kind of temperatures in late April and May and see if we can go ahead and say, okay, we're not gonna need the heating portions of the system. We can go ahead and shut those down and start, uh, demoing those. And looking at the long range forecast today, we feel pretty good that we might do that in the next week or so.
Some runner hallways with some of the lights.
They have been doing lighting at Woodville.
Mr. Gessen, he's checking those out.
Right.
Yeah, we can see that.
That's great.
Questionable, but.
It is worth, it is worth noting that, um, there wasn't as much HVAC work maybe over, over spring break is, is, it doesn't endanger the project, but it, but it is important to know that our middle school is not going to be utilized for community events this summer. It'll be, uh, there'll be no air conditioning in that space. And there will be about a month of, of time for our high school. Most of that will be within the dead period time of, of athletics. Um, but there'll be some changes that, that come as a result of some of this work and that's in the summer.
That just feels nostalgic, right?
The high school, yeah. You're gonna talk about how hot it was and walk into school in the snow and all that too.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion for the approval of construction cost neutral change order number one for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract Project.
Let's go through.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then you have a pay application.
We do have a request for pay application number one, the CMTA in, in the amount of four hundred one thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and sixty-two cents. And this is for work performed up to this point. So, uh, we, we also, just for your information, we did receive some invoices from, for some of the equipment that has already arrived that we are paying directly. So, um, you, those, because they were done through the purchase order process, don't get individually approved as a pay application, but I just wanted to, you know, we did receive some of those because some of the equipment has arrived, uh, at least at the contractors. A little bit's been installed, but, um, a lot of the equipment they had in hand and a lot of it's been shipped.
Good. Okay, questions at all? Okay, all right, I need a motion for the approval of pay application number one to CMTA Incorporated in the amount of four hundred one thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and sixty-two cents for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract Program.
I so move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Last thing. Is our annual visit to, uh, request permission to, or approval of requests for proposed for custodial services. These are for the items we most commonly buy and what we want to do is we want to put these out uh, for specific products and quantities that we like to use, uh, get fit pricing on them and then it kind of creates the ceiling on what we would, uh, be buying these products for, for the next year. Uh, knowing that if we were to find them for less uh, at any point, whether it be through one of our co-ops or whatever the case may be, um, we can purchase them for less. But we, we like to do this process ourselves to kind of establish that ceiling.
Anybody have questions? Okay, then I need a motion for the approval of the RFP for custodial supplies.
I'm Dave Jeffrey.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
I was gonna say.
I know, that's why we were looking at you like.
It's his favorite thing. I mean, I do want better paper towels in, in the bathroom. Lowest price though. When that comes back in, you need to have some good questions.
All right, okay.
Hi, Amy. I'm here to talk to you about the Equipment Lease and Security Agreement from KISPA, which is for those listening, the Kentucky Interlocal School Transportation Association, that's what KISPA stands for. And this is an additional step in the process for a bus acquisition. So we are moving forward with obtaining a bus. We're hoping to have it in fall of 2023 and this is to move forward with the bond sales so that we can then have the financing and have the payments set in place for future years. Um, and so this is a formal process that the board does enter into along with, uh, receiving the tax certificate so that Andy can move forward also with the proper documentation for our budget.
Okay, questions? This, this is a conversation we actually started last summer or fall. Um, in, in terms of just the, the very small number of buses that we have, we have to get into a replacement cycle and so, um, this is being out in front of it enough that it's replacing, then it was starting to cost us more money to maintain than to, to purchase the new bus. So it's a year in the making. You probably still won't even receive it until October.
Correct. District Hatton did anticipate it would be an October receipt. Um, but we have been talking for months about this. We've talked through the replacement aside, the need of the district, how it would navigate the streets. It's been ordered. That part has been finished. I concluded it's just now considering the payment.
All right, I need a motion for the approval of the KISPA Equipment Lease and Security, everyone.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, Brian, you're next on salary schedules. Yep, um, excited to talk about, um, salary schedules this year, uh, what's being recommended. And I know that, that the board has had an opportunity to review, uh, our first draft. A lot of the times, well, our, our recommendations. Uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of years, uh, we would, we would actually have this as a May item and so, um, I would, um, I'll submit to you, we'll have potentially a couple amendments, uh, going into, into the, uh, to the May season. Uh, but one of the things that we really want to make sure that we accomplish is we have to attract and retain the best people that, that are available. Last year we had, um, twenty-two persons retire. Uh, this year, uh, we're expecting around sixteen, so those are, those are, uh, two fairly large waves of retirements. And it starts to slow down a little bit in terms of projections. Um, but it's, it's becoming more and more difficult to be competitive with, uh, with area districts, particularly in, in times of inflation, so. Uh, so last year we had a very conservative and modest, uh, uh, salary increase. Uh, we lost a little bit of ground compared to, to some, uh, to some locations and, and so we made some difficult choices. Uh, at, at the building level, uh, across the district, we, we were very conservative in our approach. And so Salary Committee, uh, worked, uh, together to, to identify some areas uh, that we could, uh, could really bump up. And so we're prepared to make a recommendation that we, um, have a three percent across the board, um, salary increase on top of a step increase, which would mean that most, uh, most staff would be in the four to four and a half percent raise of this next year. Barely keeping up with inflation, but, but at the same time, uh, when, when we look at, at this recommendation, it's really our largest, um, it's our largest recommendation in, in at least thirty years, uh, to, to my, uh, to my recollection and going back in, in the records that we can find. Uh, and it comes as a result of, of a community that is uber supportive. A Board of Education that is very intentional in, in focus on, on teachers and staff. Um, and, and really the decisions that are made as, as a community, so. Uh, so three percent across the board. We do have a few areas that we needed to have, uh, larger catch-up, uh, particularly in some of our classified positions, uh, to try to be, uh, comparable to, to local districts. And so there is a, a slightly larger increase in some of those cells. Uh, we also have within the, the proposal that we're giving to you all, a, um, uh, there are a few positional revisions that we've discussed. Uh, there is a, uh, there's one slightly new position that is, uh, within the salary schedule for a district-wide custodian. Uh, prior to that was a, was a, a part-time custodian and we're asking that to be uh, a full-time district-wide custodian maintenance assistant. Uh, but other than that, most of the, uh, But other than that, most of the, most of the positions are fairly, fairly similar. Happy to take any questions that we have. It is, it was very much appreciated through our communication committee with our teachers. It does put us very close to where we wanna be in Northern Kentucky, but I think it's important for attraction and retention for sure.
I, I wanna, you know, tell the teachers that we appreciate everything you do, and we go into it all the time trying to figure out how we can, you know, increase salaries and keep people and retain them, so you're very important to us, and, you know, we had two new people on the board, and, you know, they, they could see what, I mean, we look in and look out ten years, you know, what's it going to look like? And so while two of us serve on Salary Committee and two of us serve on Budget Committee, that's always been the beacon, I mean, that's been the goal that, that we look at, so we appreciate everything you do, and, you know, it's a good start, and, and, you know, we've, we've had to do, especially last year, when, you know, we had property evaluations and had to really cut and do different things, so please hang with us, you know, we really appreciate everything that the teachers do. Did you guys have any questions or anything?
No, I would disagree, this is probably one of the most important things that we do, and, you know, I think, having been on here a while, and I think in the past, you know, we, you know, and I don't know anybody else that's been on the board, but I know I was on it when we didn't do a raise, and I think that's a mistake, and so, you know, if there's anything I would say to future boards is don't, don't do that, because once you realize you have an issue, it's too late, you've gotta be able to keep your best teachers, you've gotta be able to recruit the best teachers, and to do that, you've gotta have a very competitive schedule, and so I think this gets us back on track and puts us in a good spot, but we're not, you know, we gotta be, we gotta be ready to, to do that. This has gotta be one of the key financial areas that we need to always look to first as we're doing things, so I love what we're doing here, and I think we just, for future boards, make sure they're always looking at that first, that's not a cut area.
Great, and I wanna thank you, Brian, for all the work you've done, I mean, last year was hard, and trying to figure out how we were gonna see our way out of that, you know, and work within, you know, what we were, what we were given, and so I really appreciate the work that you've done.
And I guess to, to the points of, within the Salary Committee, there was a heavy emphasis in the discussion as, as a board that, that we stay on a pathway where we do put, put ourselves in a position to continue to, to support teacher raises as, as time goes on, and so we, we found efficiencies in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year at a year where we had a reduction in state, state contribution as a result of an increase in, in local property taxes, or local property assessments, and so we, we found some of those efficiencies, we did make some work commitments, but we're also, we have a board that's made decisions that, that will allow us to be committed and do something each year. Maybe not at this substantial of a, of a, of a rate, but something that's been moving forward. Thank you all.
That is, yeah, to your point, you see different districts approach that differently, but really trying to make sure that we continually will be able to have that group and maintain that, because we value the staff and the teachers, and don't want it to be something that's, you know, this is people's livelihood, and obviously, we, we wanna be fair about that, so.
It's a long game for us, and we're, we're in it to, to look at decades at a time, and so you gotta, you gotta play it that way.
Well, that was a particularly challenging time, I mean, with way inflation's gone and the different things, and we're trying to kind of keep that, keep that going, but yeah, staff's the heartbeat of any organization, right? And I don't know, I mean, it's, whether it's a school or private world, everybody's trying to make sure we're, you know, you're in the, the salary game that you need to be and taking care of things, so I think it was certainly important.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the salary schedule for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, the employee wellness incentive, are you gonna talk about that?
This is something we've, we've done annually since two thousand and eight for our Firecracker 4K, or 5K.
You're, you're trying to show it off, but it's five.
So I just, I just told myself I only run the 4K.
He turns around. Sounds like CEO.
But each year, the, the board has, has paid the registration and a t-shirt for, for any staff or faculty member that wants to participate, it's always cool to see all the same colored shirts from Fort Thomas Schools, all starting together, we don't all finish together. So we ask for, for continued support of this program.
And it's also fun when you all talk trash to each other, like who wins, you know, who was, who was good, who was bad, so.
They beat Mr. Dornell last year, but he's been treating.
There you go. See, let, let the talking begin.
Well, it sounds like you did a 4K though.
Yeah. I don't know the.
I knew I was gonna win, so.
I did not win.
Insert montage.
So I need a motion for the approval of the Employee Wellness Incentive for Employee Participation in the twenty-twenty-three YMCA Firecracker 5K. I move to approve the wellness incentive, okay? Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks. One more thing here?
Yep, last year, we approved a, a service, or a contract agreement for publishing services for Living Media to do not only our school calendar, our district calendar, but also our traditions. As part of that contract, it, it allows us to renew it for up to two, two separate years, as long as the price remain, and I have been in contact with, with the organization, and they're gonna hold the price again, and so we're making a recommendation to continue with that contract. I do expect that there could be some, some changes to quantity, there have been some fairly large increases in paper costs and things along those lines, and so because this contract doesn't actually include, include even postage, we, we may find some opportunities for us both to reduce some of what's sent out by having an opt-in for those who aren't within our district or who don't, we're not sure if they're still active addresses, so there are some efforts in that, in that area, but we're making a recommendation to continue.
Well, and I know there was some discussion on a, you know, webpage kind of link to do some of those that way rather than paper.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have an addition this summer and in, in the winter, the two additions will have an opportunity for people to sign in through a QR code or, or through our district office if you are outside of Fort Thomas, or, so we will continue to send copies of traditions to every household within the city of Fort Thomas, every tuition family and every staff member, whether they live inside the district or not. And then for the next two additions, there'll be a way to opt-in to stay on that mailing list, but we're not gonna continue just to send after this December edition to, to addresses we're not sure are live.
Any questions? All right, I need a motion for the approval to continue the contract for publishing services with Living Media, Media in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred to produce two issues of traditions, and forty-one hundred to produce a school calendar, for a total of twenty-five thousand, five hundred for publishing services for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
So. Go ahead. So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Okay.
Did you get that, babe?
We move to two faces.
She made it up.
I got opposed to you in there, so. That's good. Okay, anything else, Brian, for that? All right, then the next part are discussion items, so do we have any updates on board committees? I think you do, don't you?
Yes, I do, well, we talked about the hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, the foundation has been given out, the recognition of the teachers and the nesties on Thursday, so those are kind of the big things, a successful fundraising event took place, that's the parents sign out, so one of the, the things that, that gets to feed all of that, so that's great. Then other Hall of Fame committees, there are decisions being made this week to, to start coming out with that, the next incoming class, so excited to, to honor those athletes and coaches and teams that are so deserving. I think those are all mine.
Okay, and the Breakfast Committee continues, so we have one more, one more, I know, we'll, we'll bring one more time.
Favorite committee.
Yes, the favorite committee, I know. It's funny when I walk in, all, when we walk in the, the schools, it, they're really happy to see us, so we'll continue to do that, but we'll do one more time during the whole Teacher Appreciation Month, so that's our next one. All right, anybody else have committees?
You know, I, I just, you know, I wanna say thanks to, to the board, because you guys are present all of the time, and it's hard to even, for everyone to get a good sense of, of how active and how much time and dedication that, that is, that comes from this Board of Education, whether it's the rewards programs, or facility discussions, or serving breakfast, or, you know, being part of the prize patrol, or Hall of Fame, or Title IX, or whatever happens to be, Salary Committees and, and Budget Committees, so I just wanna thank you all, and as we're recognizing new salary schedules and things along those lines, you guys do this as just a service, and so, so thank you, and by having all of our, our staff, thank you for all of that.
Well, thank you, I enjoy doing it, it kind of feeds up a part of my educational soul that I wasn't ready to give up, so I, I, it's a great, this is a great place, it's a great place, we wanna keep it going. Okay, the next thing is the approval of the Consent Agenda. With all board members have, I need a motion, with all board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all the items contained, contained therein, approval of the Consent Agenda. Need a motion for that?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then the next thing is just other business, do you have anything else you wanna tell us about? No? Anybody else? Okay, with that, then we are adjourned.
I have one question, just clarification on the family game night.
I was like, she went back and read her.
I did go back and read because, because apparently, just recently, the kids procured some food trucks to be a part of it, and so it is no longer being held here, it's being held at the nest hall, and so there will be food trucks, so I was incorrect initially and wanted to make sure.
What's the date and time?
It's six a.m. on the, gosh, twenty-seven, let me double check, yes, the twenty-seven Thursday at the nest hall.
Yeah, she's questioning everything. No faith in herself.
So notice this, we'll go out, and, and I'm sure all the, all the schools.
It's on, it's on the city webpage and all of that.
I'm pretty excited to see. Okay, anything else? All right, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.